... has more on that.
It never ceases to amaze me, the courage of hobbits.
Today is December 30th, 2013. Sorry for a delay. We had a little delay on everyone getting here and waiting on a computer. It is 2:00 PM. If I can go ahead and get a call to order and a roll call, please. Mayor Shirley?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
If I can get everybody that is able to, to stand up. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the two billion dollars for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just as a whole.
Thank you. We have no awards or proclamations today, so we can go ahead and go on to citizens' forums. This is an opportunity for anyone that has something that's not on today's agenda to come forward and address the commission.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Elvin DeVorce. I have been very proud to be your building official for the past two and a half years. I've actually been in Salina three and a half years. I have accepted a position in Lakewood, Colorado, which is my hometown. It's where I grew up, and I'm very excited to start that new position. And sorry it was such a quick turnaround, but they are eight weeks behind on plan review. I've taken a senior plans examiner position. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the, this commission, the previous commissioners, the wonderful staff here at the City of Salina, and most definitely the wonderful citizens of this community. It has been my pleasure and my honor to be here in this town. It's a wonderful place. I tell people back home that Salina is a smaller town with a big heart and a big, big dreams and big goals. The artwork in this community is wonderful. You have so much here. The water park, I mean, that's, you see that in big cities, that type of a water park. Also, I wanted to put in a plug for Salina Community Theater. You guys don't know what a gem you have here. I, I talked to people back, I actually had a friend of mine come through town, and they got to see me in a show. I did, I did three shows there, and they got to see me in the show, and they were just blown away at that theater. Community theaters struggle all over the country, and this, you really have a gem here. It's wonderful that the community supports that, and that's just the, that's just how this community supports things. And it's been my honor, my ple, my pleasure, my privilege to, to be a part of this staff, and it's, I just wanted to say thank you, so.
We appreciate all your hard work and dedication the last couple of years, and it's always nice to work with a fellow Bronco fan.
Yep.
You've done a great job. Good luck, good luck.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I'll look for you on TV.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna go finish some work.
Thanks, Elvin.
Is there anybody else today that'd like to come up? We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so I'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 16th, 2013. Item 6.2, authorize the purchase of one lime slurry pump at the water treatment plant chemical building from Fluid Equipment and Company in the amount of $15,589.35. Item 6.3, approve supplemental agreement number two for the water treatment plant capital maintenance improvements, project number 135958 with Walter Morgan and Construction Incorporated.
Is there anything a commissioner would like removed from the agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Move on to administration.
Item 7.1, resolution number 137061, exempting certain municipality-owned buildings from the provisions of Kansas Personal and Family Protection Act through December 31st, 2017.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you are aware, during this 2013 legislative session, the legislature approved and the governor signed into law Senate substitute for House Bill Number 2052, and that is entitled the Personal and Family Protection Act. Can you hear me in the room?
I can now.
Okay. The, the new law is, is obviously law now. It requires municipal governments to allow persons to carry concealed handguns in their buildings if, unless they have applied adequate security measures or take advantage of various exemptions. The adequate security measures are defined in the law, and they include electronic monitoring at the public entrance point, as well as security personnel at that entrance point. The adequate security plan that it takes to get a four-year exemption is not defined, so that's an open-ended item that no one in the state understands just yet. Eventually, there may be some litigation that will define that for folks, but at this point, it's a bit of a guess. The law does provide some specific exclusions from the provisions. Corrections facilities, jail facilities, law enforcement agencies, and the chief judge in each judicial district, which does not include municipal courts, can prohibit carrying of the weapons into the actual courtrooms. And some of you are on the building authority and probably recall the discussion with this building, being that we have a courthouse on the third floor, not just a courthouse by itself, and what logistical issues that created. One thing I would like to note is that does, the, the application of law does overrule your local authority as city commissioners and custodians of the building, and the buildings that we own, and it preempts some personnel authority as well by specifically including protections under the law for employees of the municipalities that are on duty in municipal buildings. The new law is, is really kind of a one-size-fits-all for Kansas, but as I mentioned, it does provide a certain, I call them, exemptions. They're temporary in nature. The first was a six-month exemption that we utilized in order to try to get our arms around the law. And now what we're looking at is, for certain properties, a four-year exemption. And once that exemption timeframe is over, the four years, unless the law changes, you, the cities will either have to apply the full adequate security measures or allow handguns, concealed handguns, to be carried into the buildings. In order to utilize the, the four-year exemption, the commissioners must approve a resolution that specifically lists each building to be exempted, along with the legal description and the reason. You'll have an attachment that's a pretty long legal description, so it's a good thing we don't have to read all that verbatim in the meeting. Yeah, we'll need to have on file an adequate security plan for each exempted building and provide those security plans to the Kansas Attorney General and local law enforcement upon their request. Those security plan documents are considered closed record under the Kansas Open Records Act. At this point in time, staff has reviewed all of the city buildings, and they currently recommend for a handful for exemption. This is not to say that we may not recommend others later, but quite honestly, to try to determine what adequate, what an adequate security plan is when it's not defined is very difficult. I will say, one of the things that it led us to is, there's a lot of emphasis on physical security, you know, doors with buzzers and things like that, but the fact of the matter is, is that the best security is your training and your protocols to deal with unusual circumstances, we believe. But what you'll have in those plans is a mixture, and of course, I, I can't, I wouldn't want to talk in public about what each security plan has, but I can tell you it's a mixture of those types of things, and we also try to be very practical. But the buildings that we have identified for your consideration today include the Bicentennial Center, the animal shelter, the general services, main administration building, three buildings at the water treatment plant, including the water distribution, I'm sorry, that's a typo. The water distribution warehouse is not on, and it's typo'd on the blue sheet. It's not in the water treatment plant. We have two buildings at the water treatment plant, which include the administration building and the filter building and laboratory offices. It's all a single building. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have the monitoring raw sludge building number one, maintenance building number seven, administration building number eight, and the maintenance building number 14. The information has been put together for the creation of the security plans, and all the information is attached for your resolution to be in accordance with state law. It will take, we will take a few weeks to have those security plans fully implemented. And then some of that does include training, because we've talked about, law enforcement looks at shooting situations differently than they used to, and therefore, we need to be trained and acknowledge that. When we did look at these, what we found was, the trick is that each of these buildings have different layouts, different numbers of accesses, different ways of accessing. It's really, really difficult, and when it comes down to it, the intent of the law is not necessarily to provide any type of security measures other than the presumption that having the handguns in the buildings does elevate the security. I think that's the presumption behind the state law. That's what makes it so difficult to deal with these other options that we have. We do have listed, a little bit separately than the others, because it's specifically called out, the Police Department Building, and then you have on your meeting agenda, a couple of related agenda items. One is for full adequate security measures at the municipal court, and the other is a recommendation to the personnel manual changes, so we can make sure the manual is in conformance with the change in the law. And that'll address more of the handling aspect of the weapons and making sure that it's, to have a handgun even in the building that, under state law, a concealed handgun that would allow for it is not a violation of a Workplace Violence Act. The fiscal impact of the exemption of buildings is a bit of a guesstimate at this point in time, but we estimate it to be somewhere between 10 and 15,000 in total. I think with some practical approach to this, it's not a terribly expensive thing to look at that, but it's possible. We will look at some other measures as time goes on as well. It'll be split based on the, the buildings and which fund, that funds the activities of the buildings between the general fund and the utility fund. Let's see, when we look at it from our strategic plan perspective, it's an unfunded mandate from the state, so there's really not a strategic plan aspect, except we always, I didn't put it in here, but one of the things is to try to do our best job, and that's what our folks did with, with these. We provided a couple alternatives, and certainly there may be some in-between alternatives. Those provided are to approve resolution number 13-7061, exempting certain municipally-owned buildings from the provisions of the Kansas Personal and Family Protection Act through December 31st of 2017. The other option is do not approve that resolution at this time, which would allow the open, or the carrying of concealed weapons into those buildings. Staff recommends alternate one, but certainly there could be some in-between thoughts and options on that. So with that, I open the item up for questions.
Any questions for staff?
Quick question on, on the, on the contract part. Each of the locations has a justification for, for the exemption on this.
That's, that's correct. I didn't, I failed to mention that, but one of the requirements is a reason for that, and that's included with the resolution.
Right. And having gone through those, and then actually reading the last whereas in, in the document here, and I'll just, and this kind of goes back to Commissioner Crawford and I serve on the building authority board, and so we've kind of gone through this our second time, pretty much going through this. And that is, is the, it says in here, having evaluated the security plans developed. Is the intent of that statement to be that each of us have reviewed the, the reasons for each one of these, or would it be appropriate at all to have five minutes in executive session to just get a brief view of what that, what that requirement kind of is and what it looks like from our perspective? Or, or would you think that there is enough here in these descriptions of the exemption that, that it should, should cover it? And, and that might be a question to, to some of my colleagues, if they feel like this is, if they feel like they have a proper knowledge of this to, to vote on saying that they have evaluated this in, in any way.
Yeah, it's, it's really up to you. I think that's a kind of a standard provision. Each of the buildings has some common aspects, and there's some that are a little bit different. It's really totally up to you with regards to that. If you'd like to take some time executive session and talk about some of the components of those, we'd be happy to do that. I think that's a kind of a standard provision in the, the resolution. It's not intended to, but there's not really a lot of intent in there necessarily.
Right.
It's up to you. We'd be happy to.
I, I don't need to, because as I said, I've, I've kind of been that, through that before, but I didn't know if, if anyone else had.
Well, we're voting on something that I haven't seen. I would feel a little bit uncomfortable.
Yeah, keep, keep in mind one thing, too. As I mentioned, the, the adequate security plans can change through time. That's not something that you have to vote on specifically. And those could change at any time. We may look at a building in three months down the road and say, well, that's fine, but we'd like to do this, or we'd like to do that. So those can change, and those don't specifically need to be voted on. And I don't know, I might refer that question to Jake with Clark Meisenlinville to see if you had any thoughts as to whether you thought there was a need or expectation with regards to those adequate security plans for each building.
Afternoon, Commissioners. I think Jason hit it on the head, basically. I, I think it's fully within your discretion, if you'd like to discuss the security plans before you, you vote on it. That's certainly acceptable, but as Jason said, I, I think that's a fairly standard provision in these resolutions. So I just defer to your discretion on that matter.
And, and that being that each one of the, I, I think the, the part that kind of gets a little tricky is that the justification is one thing, and what, what some of the elements of a security plan may be.
Well-
And if they differ at all from location to location.
Well, they, they certainly do differ from location to location. I think that's, the particulars of those security plans would probably be best discussed within executive session. And as Jason mentioned before, there isn't a whole lot of guidance on what a security plan is, and that's something that we've struggled with in, in developing these exemptions. But I think if, if we're gonna get into the particulars of the security plans, we'd certainly want to do that.
Is there any anticipation that in the upcoming legislative session, that if this is to be revisited, that, that there may be further definition of what that plan is? And whether or not our exemption would still be active if they happen to change, something that doesn't fit within what we've provided?
I hesitate to, to predict what the legislature may or may not do. I might cert, if I had my preference, I would certainly hope that they'd elaborate a little bit further on security plans, but I think if I tried to, it would be pure speculation at this point for me to, to say one way or the other, what I'm, what I expect the legislature would do in the upcoming session.
I think, Commissioners, it's, I would say it's fairly safe to expect that they may not elaborate, simply because they have to recognize that each building is in a different circumstance. They're constructed differently in different locations, and I'm not sure statutorily whether they could very easily elaborate and say this is an adequate security plan and assert that. And that combined with the thought that that's not the intent of the law. The intent of the law is to allow concealed handguns in the building. If I'm a legislate, legislator and I have the majority votes, why would I fool with any other aspect of it unless there's a kind of a quick and easy thing we can help you out with, such as, you know, this question about individual buildings versus maybe a floor on, a third floor on a building like this, you know, in the court space. That may be something you see and look at, but it's hard to tell.
I don't have any problem with not evaluating a plan. I think that's, to me, that's procedural and pretty much procedural, and, and we don't even know what the legislature wants. So I don't have a problem with this way it stands.
I wouldn't have a problem with it if we'd strike that whereas.
Mayor and Commissioners, I was going to suggest that if, with the point having been raised, I do think either the whereas should be stricken, or you should take the opportunity to review the plans. The, one thing we could do procedurally, if it's helpful, is that certainly your ultimate action on this needs to occur today, but it could be tabled until later in the meeting, after you have a chance to go through your other items, and those plans could be retrieved, and that executive session could occur toward the end of your agenda, if that would be helpful.
I mean, the whereas is fine. None of us are security experts, so seeing the plan isn't gonna lay, isn't gonna mean anything to the five of us. We don't have the expertise to-
I understand.
I mean, I'm probably the closest, and, and that's not much.
Right. But I think with the way the conversation is going, it would be my recommendation that you take the time to go through the plans in executive session today.
Or remove the whereas.
Or remove the whereas.
I'm comfortable removing the whereas.
And I would recommend, actually, that you not remove the whereas. I think if we're going through this process-
(laughing)
I think it-
Sounds like we'll have an executive session.
I think we need to have an executive session, and you need to go through those, and we can, then we can act on the resolution as presented. That would be my recommendation, anyway.
That's fine. Yeah, if you'd like to do that, we can, we can take this and to, to be the last item on the regular agenda action item, and then we can hit the other two, because they're really somewhat independent from this specific item.
Sure, you need a motion to-
Just a motion to table.
Yeah, I'll move it.
To the end of the meeting.
I'll motion to table, item 7.1, till the end of the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table item 7.1 to the end of the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, 5-0.
Item 7.2, resolution number 137062, authorizing agreement with Imperial Security Services for municipal court security.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Staff is recommending that you contract with Imperial Security Services, because we, we do believe in conversations, many conversations, that we should provide full adequate security measures for the municipal court. The, the thought being is that you have quite a mixture of folks there, from those that are charged with, with crimes, that may also have charges for more serious crimes up in district court, with witnesses, with victims, and, and of course, other folks in the, in the room as well. And, and when we really started to think about this, when we've had conversations about security in the past, but we really felt that we probably should have been doing this on our own some time ago, but it did help us to really put some thought into it. And so that's what we're recommending. We, we chose private security primarily because, at this point, because ideally, from my perspective, I'd like to have a commissioned law enforcement officer in there, but given the tight timeframe we had, we really didn't feel like we could do that. Our police staffing isn't such that we could use a police officer. The sheriff's office would need some time to be able to add a person as well without compromising their own staffing. So what we wanted to do first is meet the timeline, find someone who the police department and others felt was a good company, who's done this before, who can probably take us through the year and evaluate that and decide where we want to end up next year. The cost of the private security is slightly less than it would be from the public security approach. The basic, and what we have is an agreement for you that would ensure that the security is, is ready in the court on January 2nd. And again, Imperial Security Services is the company that we've looked at. They've done a lot of, especially a lot of private. We really don't know what other Kansas cities are doing right now, because they're all kind of waiting to the last minute to figure out what they want to do or not do with all this. But this company has provided security for various branches of AT&amp;T and FedEx and some other companies, and we called references, and they were all very, very good, so we have a high confidence in them. Kind of go through the basic agreement. We have the basic scope, which is, again, that they have to use electronic monitoring equipment, which is, part of this is to make that purchase and for the city to own that equipment after that, because we may use them in the long term, we may not, but if we have to have the equipment to meet that statutory requirement, we should own that. They'll provide a, a security guard to detect and restrict the carrying of the weapons in the court, provide physical protection of the premises, prevent theft vandalism, some sort of ancillary things that you typically wouldn't expect to happen there, enforce the entry access rules, and if there's a dispute, a disorder of confrontation, to be at least the first in line there. We'll have protocols of contacting our police officers, because these folks are considered merchant security in the same way that other private security is in our community, which means that they, their folks have to go through the same background checks that our other merchant security personnel do. And they're also limited then in what they can and can't do. Certainly, they don't have arrest authority and some other authorities, so we'll have to be sure that we have a, a good communication protocols with our police department. As I mentioned, they'll provide the walkthrough and handheld monitoring equipment that'll be shipped, ready, tested, and in, in use on January 2nd. Any of the equipment for personnel is provided by them as well. They'll again have to go through our licensure as merchant security personnel in accordance with our ordinance. We've included public interaction standard of conduct. We'll have to have conversations and make sure they're trained, but quite honestly, whether they're security, whether they're greeters or whatever, it's pretty nice to have a, you know, welcome and thank you for coming in, or some, some type of a positive approach when somebody walks in. People walk into municipal court, they're not always extremely happy, and so we want to be sure that we're a pretty gracious service schedule. Anytime that the municipal court is open to the public with no gaps in coverage. It's fairly routine, but we do go along on, on an evening or two occasionally. Agreement is for one year, subject to the termination provisions we'll talk about a little bit later. The cost is $22.50 per hour to include all the costs, with exception of the equipment, which we'll, we'll purchase in full. And with regards to the equipment, we'll receive, of course, the warranties as owner of that. The termination may occur due to default or either party providing. We ended up with 60, I believe. Is that correct, Aaron? 60 days. There's an update with, with what we have in front of you is a slightly amended version of the agreement on a couple things that they provided some last-minute thoughts on, and so that includes a change in that termination, which is 60 days. If, for some reason, they want to step away on their own, that's fine. We, I think we can make arrangements in 60 days, and we'd like to have the ability, if for some reason it's not working outright, to be able to plan for ourselves and do the same thing. So it works fine. Contains equal opportunity provisions. A lot of insurance coverage, I won't go through it, but our legal staff and our risk management specialist has looked at that, and they are well insured. That's not a problem whatsoever, and our standard indemnification provisions. As I mentioned, when they start, they will help us to meet the adequate security measures provided by state law. And we, we do believe, based on our checks of the company, they'll provide a very good service. And part of that, again, will be, will be some orientation in the beginning. The electronic monitoring equipment cost for both pieces is approximately $4,881.55. A little bit shipping, so shipping could vary that just a bit. It's not as expensive as we first thought, but we're practically, we still can't afford to put that everywhere, because you have to put people with it. The annual cost of the security services is estimated to be about $59,000 per year, based on the $22.50 per hour and the estimated hours the court would be open. So it gives you an impact of that unfunded mandate right there. The, both will be funded through the general fund municipal court budget. We will need to revise the municipal court departmental budget to include the security services. We can certainly do that if you approve the agreement. Couple options. Approve a resolution number 13-7062, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Imperial Security Services for municipal court security, or not to approve the resolution at this time. If we don't approve the resolution, we'll have to choose whether to allow concealed handguns in, or whether to bring the facility in under the four-year exemption, which we'd have to do a little bit more background work if we're going to do that, just to keep, keep that in mind. Staff recommends alternative one, and we think we have a pretty good plan to start off with. This is gonna be new to all of us, so there's gonna be orientation for all of us as we get into this, but we think we're in pretty good shape to start off with. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is there any questions for staff?
I have one question on the, the one employee situation. There are times where, you know, the person will need to take a break, whatever, and, and so that can be handled, I'm assuming, by additional personnel that are already in the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, you are correct. When you have one, they sometimes have to take a break, and you don't get a choice. And they brought that up, and we can work through our logistics with that, but in essence, I think what'll happen is, is we typically have a court services officer that's available in the court. They're doing a lot of different things, but to cover for a restroom break, that probably makes, is the most practical approach, and if they're not available, we'll have to use somebody else, because we certainly need to allow them to take a quick restroom break if they need to do that.
And what about for extended periods? Does the person has a week-long illness or something?
It's up to the company to have someone that's already been approved through merchant security background checks to fill in for them.
Okay.
On the, on the one-year, it's a one-year contract, correct?
Yes.
And then it's renewable up to three times? One year, one year each? Is that?
Take a peek.
Yes, okay. And so are those-
That is correct.
So would the renewal be at the same $22.50 an hour?
At this point, yes.
For any of the renewals?
Yeah. No, I mean, they could always request for renegotiation of that, but at this, the way it's constructed today, yes.
Okay. And we own the equipment, so we're, is there any calibration that's regularly, any regularly scheduled maintenance that is, that occurs with this stuff, or is it pretty routine?
That's a good question. I, I've always said, if I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know, and I'm not sure if there is. Well, that's one thing we'll have to make sure that we know, and if there is, we'll obviously need to get that properly calibrated. I don't, I don't know how complicated that type of monitoring equipment really is, but we can certainly look into that and make sure we do that.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Gage.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 13-7062, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Imperial Security Services Incorporated for municipal court security.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, resolution number 137063, admitting the city of Salina personnel manual to bring it into conformity with the Personal and Family Protection Act, and to address the responsibility- and to address the responsibility handling of handguns as related to city property.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll forward past all the beginning comments that we've already made, but let you know the city's personnel manual, Article 18, Section 18, addresses workplace violence. It has a section in there that I believe is pretty consistent with most workplace violence provisions in most cities across the country, that have probably been pretty similar to that for decades. A couple of the things that it provides, it currently provides that violence is defined as may involve the carrying or displaying weapons, as well as some other things. And there's a section of it that also has, indicates possession, use of dangerous weapons by an employee is a violation. And it says, "In the interest of maintaining a workplace that is safe and free from violence, except as herein after provided, possession or use of weapons prohibited on city property or in city vehicles." And so that's kind of been the basis for workplace violence in cities across the country for many, many years. And with the change in state law in Kansas, that sort of turns it upon its head a bit. So we felt that you probably wanted your personnel manual to be in compliance with state law. And so we have some recommendations and changes here. The effective date of any changes would obviously be January 1st, so we can be in compliance with the law. Specifically, what we have in the personnel manual is an amendment to the Workplace Violence subsection that provides an exception for all buildings that have not been provided with adequate security measures or the four-year exemption. So if they don't have the adequate security measures, they don't have the four-year exemption, that means by state law that concealed handguns can be brought in, and therefore, the manual is changed to provide for that. It provides that the continued restriction on handgun storage, and specifically that any storage of handguns by an employee in any city-owned building would continue to be a violation. So basically, anything that's specifically protected by state law is fine. But if it's not, then it goes back to workplace violence. So there's a question about storing a weapon on the property. The law does not obligate us to store a weapon on the property. We felt it's best not to have that. And so at this point, your manual would suggest that's still a violation of the Workplace Violence Act. Addresses the restrictions in dealing with possessing a concealed handgun in any city vehicle. Right now, that's restricted. The law does not provide that we have to allow that, so that would still be restricted and a violation. There are some exceptions to that. Obviously, law enforcement activities is the real exception. The possession of a handgun in buildings, again, it's clear that if it's a building that's protected by the law, then the handgun would be, the concealed handgun would be allowed to be in there. But if it's not, it would not be allowed to be in there by either the public or employees. There's a few circumstances that are addressed that deal with the restriction of handguns on city-owned property, except as allowable. I mean, they're not allowed unless allowable. And some of those kind of more specific exceptions under the family, Personal Family Protection Act include lawful defense of oneself, which that's the presumption of the act, one's property another person, or against a wild animal, discharge at a public or private shooting range, lawfully taking wildlife, law enforcement officers, animal control officers, or others with a permit from the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism, excuse me, by permission of the chief of police or sheriff from the city has no police department. I kind of hope we don't ever experience that. But, and when using blanks. So those are specific to the law. So other than that, a person cannot handle or have on their person a concealed weapon unless it's in the building that allows for that weapon. The other aspect with regards to handling is conveyance to and from. There's a presumption that if you have a site that has a building that does allow for the concealed weapon, that you can have it on the site, for example, in the parking lot, for the purpose of conveying that to the building. Because it wouldn't, it would sort of be contrary to the law. If you couldn't have it in the parking lot, therefore, you couldn't park, but you could have it in the building. So we make reference in regards to the conveyance, and that's specifically outlined as well. But any handling beyond conveyance could be, and I say could be, we'd have to look very closely at it, but could be a violation of the Workplace Violence Act as well, because we believe it may be, it probably is beyond the intent of the law. The item has no fiscal impact, doesn't have any applicability really with the strategic plan. And so with that, we have a couple of options. One's to approve the Resolution 13-7063, which approves the personnel manual updates, which if approved, will be distributed as soon as possible to our employees, probably along with some form of a memorandum or a question-answer type sheet, too. Because we do expect we're going to get a lot of those questions, and we want to try to get that information out as quickly as possible. The other option is not to approve the changes at this time. But given the state law, we believe that those changes do need to be approved to make sure we are conforming. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Is there any questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Gage. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt Resolution Number 13-7063, amending the city's line of personnel manual to bring it into conformity with Personal and Family Protection Act and to address the responsible handling of handguns as related to the city property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. We have no development business.
Go back to 7.1, is that correct?
I believe so. Mr. Banks, should we go ahead and bring back our tabled item? Or should we go ahead and request an executive session for a few minutes?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be best to remove the item from the table first, and if it is your wish to go into the executive session. I might explain, I appreciate your entertaining my recommendation in that way. The reason, as the discussion progressed, the statute speaks specifically to those buildings that are under the jurisdiction of a governing body as compared to those that are under the jurisdiction of a separate administrator. It doesn't really make a distinction for city manager form cities. So I think we have been approaching it on the basis that we were dealing with buildings that were under the jurisdiction of the governing body. And as such, I think we're in one of those areas where each of you needs to be comfortable with how we're going forward. I hope I wasn't incorrect. I think it somewhat goes out of the strictly a majority question, but I think if any one of you are uncomfortable, we should take just a few minutes to familiarize everyone with the plan. So I appreciate your willingness to do that. I know Mr. Gage indicated it would take a few minutes to retrieve those. So I think the first order would be a motion to remove the item from the table that then would get it before you. That takes a motion, second, and a majority vote. And then if it is your wish to go into the executive session, that would take your normal vote. There is an exception for that in and of itself. I frankly can't rattle off verbatim exactly what that is, but I think it could be simply stated in terms of the secure, security aspect of that, of those plans, that qualifies for a legitimate executive session.
So it wouldn't be other trade secrets or anything?
No, just a motion based upon the security aspects of that discussion.
I'd move, then, that we remove 7.1 from the table and put it back onto the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to put item 7.1 back on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
And then I would motion that we convene into executive session for, we fill five minutes? 10 minutes?
Probably 15. I'll need to run upstairs and grab the information.
Okay, for 15 minutes to discuss security measures that would compromise that security if discussed in public.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We wouldn't expect any legal action on that.
No, it'll just be a matter of the agenda item being back before you at the close of the executive session.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We will go into executive session. Executive session. Can go ahead and bring this back to my commissioners to see if we have any more questions that we need to ask of staff.
No, I'd just like to thank staff for reviewing that, those plans with us.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 13-7061, exempting certain municipally-owned buildings from the provisions of the Kansas Personal and Family Protection Act through December 31st, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Go ahead and move on to other business.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think we do have need for an executive session. And I was just discussing quickly with the city manager how that might best be structured. I'm looking to him to see if I'm correct that possibly the trade secrets discussion should be first, and should we deal with that on a specific basis before moving on to the other executive session topics?
Yeah, I think that would help it flow better. That works for you.
About how long?
Try 20 minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation and reconvene at 3:25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are back into executive session.
I might explain quickly, Mayor, that just for anybody observing that there are some persons that are resources to you in relation to these discussions, so there'll be a little in-and-out activity. We have to be sure to isolate those persons with the subject of your conversation, so.
Do we expect any action?
On this topic, no.
Okay.